Good evening, the time is just past seven o'clock. I apologize for being tardy, but Mr. Mock was keeping us from starting the meeting on time.[20.23][20.23](laughter) First shot fired. It is April 19th, this is the regular session number forty-nine. We are happy to start the opening session off now, and I'm going to ask my good friend, and somebody who's been very important in my life spiritually, Reverend Don Weeks from Raytown Christian Church, to deliver the invocation.
Do you stand? Oh God, our Creator, you are the God of all. You care for all the people of our town: apartment dwellers, motel dwellers, nursing home residents, those who live in small rented houses, and those who live in beautiful big homes. You delight in all the children of our community: every color, and every shape, and every size, every ability, and every need. You love them all. You direct the businesses of this community, from our small startups to the great companies with roots deep and wide. We humbly bow our heads before you this evening. Our town begins a new chapter in our history this night, and we seek your wisdom foremost. Bless our elected officials, our mayor and our aldermen. Give them your unfailing leadership, we pray. Grant them eyes to see all of your people, and all of your possibilities. Help their skin to be thick, and their hearts to be tender. Give them grace to give in for the greater good. And give them courage to stand strong when giving in would mean giving up. Bless our fair town, oh God. Shake this community free from apathy and division. Keep us from complacency. Make us true neighbors to one another. Heal us, we pray, economically and relationally, and be pleased to dwell here with us. Oh God, we ask this night that it would be said of Raytown, that we are a town of unusual vitality, effectiveness, and kindness. In your name and for your glory, we ask this. Amen.
Thank you, Don. At this time, I'm going to call upon Bernie Swarmer, who is a scoutmaster of Troop 285, Raytown Christian Church, and Blake Shepard, who will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Blake?
Color guard advance. Please join us in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Two. You may be seated. The colors of the flag. Writers and speakers often attribute the meaning of the colors of the flag, but in truth, the Continental Congress never spoke about what the colors represented. But the red, white, and blue colors included in the Great Seal of the United States, which first appeared in seventeen eighty-two, did purportedly represent ideals and beliefs of our founding fathers. Their significance was explained by Charles Thompson, Secretary of the Continental Congress, and included in the book Our Flag, published in nineteen eighty-nine. Red: valor, bravery, blood of the patriots and those that fight for our country. White: purity, innocence, and freedom. And blue: vigilance, perseverance, and justice. The stripes represent the thirteen original colonies, and the stars represent the fifty states. Thank you once again for having us out this evening. You may be seated.
Thank you, Blake. At this time, I'm going to ask Joe Kramer to join me at the podium, please. Joe, it's been a pleasure to have you serve as the President of the Board past year. I know that times we're guilty of passing notes back and forth. I know that your answers are always better than the questions I give you, so I appreciate all that you do. I don't think anybody's aware that we're passing notes, so we'll just forget that. Randy won't report it, it'll never happen. But the acting, the Board President is a big position for our city, and we're going to take a vote on the new president here in a little bit, but Joe's been a big help as far as getting things going. Joe served in my absence when I couldn't attend things, there were things that we both were proud in different events. A lot of things are going on within this city that help us make things happen. Joe, I appreciate all that you do as the Board President. Thank you.
You got it. You got it.
Whereas Alderman Joe Kramer was elected by his peers as acting president of the Board of Alderman on April twentieth, two thousand and ten, whereas Alderman Kramer has generously given of his time and talents to serve as acting president, and to preside over meetings of the Board over the last year. Whereas Mayor and Board of Alderman wish to thank Alderman Kramer for his service, I therefore, David Byer, Mayor of the City of Raytown, do hereby recognize Alderman Joe Kramer, Mayor Pro Tem, April twentieth, two thousand and ten, for April nineteenth, two thousand and eleven, and extend our most heartfelt thanks, Joe, for your continuing service to the City of Raytown. And again, thank you very much.
(applause)
Thank you. Okay, I'll ask the clerks to call the roll, please.
Alderman Kramer?
Here.
Alderman Pardue?
Here.
Alderman Azier?
Here.
Alderman Hamilton?
Here.
Alderman White?
Here.
Alderman Nelson?
Here.
Alderman Ertz?
Here.
Alderman Van Busker?
Here.
Alderman Mock?
Here.
Alderman Lightfoot?
Here.
We have a quorum. Okay, at this time, I've got a list of people that have signed up to speak tonight under the category of public comments, and I'm going to call upon Don Weeks first, please.
Thank you. I wanted to take the opportunity while I was here to say, "How about them Royals?" Now, I'm not speaking of their playing record, I'm speaking of the fact that they have now given the Summer Lunch Ministry Program of Raytown a $2,000 grant for the 2011 summer And each of our aldermen has a copy of this brochure, and I'll leave others for anyone listening that is interested. And just seeing the teamwork of churches and organizations, just a few of which are mentioned here, that are seeking to provide lunches for the fourth year in a row to our students in between their times of summer school and regular school, starting up for the six weeks in which they need to supplement some of them to their nutrition. We expect to feed four hundred children a day in eleven locations, and we're building on that thanks to community partnership. Raytown is truly not just a town, we're a community.
Thank you, Don. It's a great program. Now, we've got representatives from Raytown Main Street, Phyllis, Pam, and Steve. Sounds like a dance group.[579.66][579.66](laughter)
We'll let Steve do the dance.
Nice buttons, by the way.
We like those. We wear them proudly all the time. So anyway, what he's talking about is I love Raytown. Pam and I are co-chairs of the Promotion Committee for Main Street, and I came before you before to tell you about our egg extravaganza. This happened last year for the first time, and Don Weeks was in on it, and Pastor of my church said, "Do you think we could get, like, a community egg hunt going?" I said, "Sure." I've been told a few times I'm an overachiever, so they held me back last year, and we had a lot of people. So this year, and Steve is our President of Main Street, we have expanded. We'll have an old car show, truck show, then we'll have photos with the bunny at the Fraternal Order of Police, and we have a very special bunny, so if nothing else, you'll want us to see and get that picture. We'll have storytime at the Raytown Mid-Contin Library for the young ones. Then we'll parade across the street with Coco Key and Miss Bunny. And then we'll have the egg hunt, and there'll be some food vendors, we'll barbecue, and hot dogs, and we're really excited about this, and what it's grown this year. Hopefully, next year, it'll even grow up more, but we hope all of you will try to come and see what we've done and be a part of it. It takes a lot of volunteers for this, and a lot of support, and we feel really good about where things are at with it. Ben from Benetti's is doing lapel pins. Last, I haven't seen this year's, last year's was the tower, and everybody was real excited about it, so we've asked for more, and I don't know that they'll be the same or what, but they went over really well last year. Northwood School has stuffed all of our eggs and are ready for some. That's really a treat, going there and seeing these young people and how excited they get about doing the eggs for us. So again, another sign that it's a community thing. This year, we've had ads in the paper, which is a great thing, that we have a paper this year to advertise in. We have an ad on the Raytown Car Wash, we have the Raytown Chamber Seemail, we've put out flyers. What I've got now, I think we're going to turn it over to Steve, he has something he wants to add.
Bailey, can I have you come? We got a special, we got a special item, or...
You've already assigned the bunny role.
Yes, we have. We couldn't convince him last night to take that, but because we're associated with the, this event's going to be associated with the Associated Car Cubs of Kansas City, and also the Truck Historical Society, we actually have for the Mayor and the Board of Alderman and the City of Raytown, the first-ever Mingle on the Green Auto Show plaque that we'd like to present to the Mayor and the Board of Alderman. So this is the first plaque on that, and we hope you display it proudly. We hope there's going to be a lot more of them. A smaller version of this plaque goes through all the cars and trucks that'll be coming to the show. We've heard a great number of responses. It could be a hundred if the weather's nice.
Make sure the weather's nice.
We'll make sure the weather's nice.
Stephen, ladies, thank you for all that you do for the community. Main Street's a big part of what we're doing. On behalf of the Board, I accept the plaque, and it's my pleasure.
There should be many more.
Perfect.[820.23][820.23](applause) Okay, would anyone else in the audience at this time like to address the Board on any matter that the Board can have a hand in? Once, twice, moving on. In the category of communication from the Mayor, there's a lot of things that I hope to say in a few minutes, but at this time, I'm going to talk about the Raytown Community Cleanup Day. This is a well-organized event, we're excited that so many different people are involved, and so many different organizations are inclusive in it this year. It's Saturday, April thirtieth, starts at eight o'clock at the Super Splash Parking Lot and goes till three o'clock. You'll see, you'll see many of the staff out there, you'll see many of the administration out there working that day. I think that we've got, I think I heard thirty-five senior citizens who will be, who will be going out to pick up items at their home that they want to discard, and to help them clean up their property by doing so. So so many different things have come together, so many different community, members are out working the communities in the neighborhood. The School District also has an event going on the same day, and I think at the end of that day, we should all be very proud of what we as a community have accomplished together. So again, Saturday, April thirtieth, eight o'clock to three o'clock, Super Splash Parking Lot, and I hope that everybody will be participating. Mahesh, floor is yours, sir.
Good evening, Mayor Bauer and Board of Alderman. Just to continue with the Community Cleanup Day event you mentioned a few minutes ago, city staff has been involved in various community functions, including the function in conjunction with the Chamber, other civic groups such as Rotary, Quanus, and nonprofit organization. I sat through one of the presentation that Summer Lunch Ministry did at the Rotary Club, and got inspired by that, and came to my management team, and decided this year during the summertime, our senior staff will go to the church and help them out, volunteer our hours to prepare lunch for the schoolchildren. So just wanted to let you know that we already start planning to attend that possibility to serve for our community. Also, give you an update on the budget for two thousand and eleven and two thousand and twelve year. I think you'll be surprised that preliminary discussions on the next-year budget have already begun at the department head level. The past approach of line item budgeting, or also known as incremental budgeting, has been modified. In that approach, line item has been increased or decreased based on the revenue projections. The current modified, or I would call hybrid approach, includes both line item as well as program-based budgeting. This upcoming year, we will be moving toward program-based budgeting for general fund expenditure. And in a few years from now, all expenditure will be moving towards program-based budgeting. This approach provides clear picture of the importance of the program, as well as how much each program costs. It is our hope that whether it is a downturn or upturn economy, this approach will provide us, as well as you, sufficient information to make sound and prudent decision. More information on this new and improved approach will be provided to you at a later date. Just wanted to point out that city administrators' report is available on the city's website. Recently, Chamber of Raytown, Chamber has started distributing city update report to its members, and I can tell you, in last few weeks, we have received a lot of compliments about having the city information getting out to the members and distributed into the community. So again, that's the effort through the Chamber and the city, and the ultimate goal is to have our citizen informed. Also, the agenda for all the board meetings and various committee meetings is also available on city's website, so if you're interested, I would encourage you to go through our website and seek out the information that you're looking for, and contact the city staff, they're always available to help you out. With that, I will conclude my report.
Thank you, sir. I'll start on my right, Mr. Pardue, committee reports.
Yes, sir. There's a Human Relations Commission this Thursday here at City Hall.
Mr. Hamilton, anything on your...
Nothing from the fire.
Mr. Azier?
Nothing from the Legislative Committee.
Ms. Nelson, Finance?
Finance will meet April twenty-sixth, Tuesday, six p.m. in Council Chambers.
Ms. White, Municipal? Mr. Mock?
Okay, Raytown Council on Aging will be meeting in the conference room this Thursday at four fifteen, and May sixth is Raytown Council on Aging will celebrate older's, excuse me, Older Adults Month. Can you hear okay? You sure?
Are you talking to me?
I'm talking to you. Okay, okay, good. Turn it up if you can, okay?
We're even.
Senior Expo two thousand and eleven on May sixth, I just got done saying that, at nine to twelve o'clock in the Chamber, and it's free to the public. That's it. That's all.
Very good. Okay, moving on to legislative session, we have, the first item is the Consent Agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda? Mr. Kramer's got the motion to approve the consent agenda, seconded by Ms. Nelson. Call the vote on that, please.
Alderman Kramer?
Yes.
Alderman Nelson? Alderman Lightfoot?
Yes.
Alderman Mock?
Yes.
Alderman Van Busker?
Yes.
Alderman Ertz?
Yes.
Alderman White?
Yes.
Alderman Hamilton?
Yes.
Alderman Azier?
Yes.
Alderman Pardue?
Yes.
Very good. Moving to the regular agenda, I'll ask the clerk to perform the second reading on item number two, please.
In order to authorizing the mayor to enter into a grant agreement with the State of Missouri Department of Economic Development for administration of a neighborhood stabilization program, three grant awarded by the Missouri Department of Economic Development under the Community Development Lock Grant Program, and the Housing and Economic Recovery Act of two thousand and eight, designating the City of Raytown as the lead party for coordination and administration of such grant funds.
Ms. Lynn, as our community development director, do you have anything to add, ma'am?
Yeah, just wanted to call attention for the Board of Alderman and the mayor tonight. I did, based on the discussion at last week's meeting, I went in and added in the, your board item tonight, the exact language from the grant that talked exactly about how the homes would be selected and what the purpose was. So just to call attention to that, and the third paragraph there that we, I bolded and underlined, that the funds would be used to purchase vacant and foreclosed homes within the target area for rehabilitation and/or demolition rebuild, that the selection of the homes to be purchased would be driven by an evaluation of the properties that are vacant or foreclosed, with a focus to select the properties that have the best opportunity to improve the market of the target area, to stimulate private activity, and to improve the opportunity for eligible families to obtain quality housing. Hopefully, that helps clarify how we would go about working with the housing specialists to identify those at-risk properties that are vacant or foreclosed, and put them through the grant program. Other than that, I'd be glad to answer any additional questions that the Board might have.
Any questions? Ms. Nelson?
I do have a couple of questions. First off, with Million Two Five, is that into a separate account that will be overseen by Finance?
Yes, actually, our Finance Director met with the Gladstone Finance Director to get a handle on what types of things to anticipate. The grant allows us to get reimbursed for any administrative activities, so charges that might come from a bank, or the single audit that will have to be done. All of those things are reimbursable through the, through the grant itself, so...
Okay. And will the Board of Alderman receive financial reports on the monies and how they're dispersed?
Staff would be glad to provide reports to the Board of Alderman. In fact, we discussed with the housing specialist and the grant administrator, trying to do a PR campaign with the project itself. What we've seen in the Gladstone and Belton, which are two communities which are very active in this program, is lots of press on not only the purchase of the home, but also the renovation, and having open houses, and encouraging Alderman to come out and see that. Next week, or not next week, but at your first meeting in May, before you will be the contract for the grant administrator and the contract for the housing specialist. With that, the gentleman who is, would be up for consideration by the Board, who is the Builders Development Corporation, plans on doing a PowerPoint presentation for the Board, so that you can get a handle on what it would look like. Some pictures of before and after, how the process of selecting a home, purchasing a home, getting it rehabbed or rebuilt, so that you can get a very clear understanding about how that process works.
Okay. And then also, on that third paragraph in the last sentence, it says about possible lower financing rates and other tools to make home ownership affordable. What other tools would be involved?
The biggest one is, what will happen is they do a regular, what you, most people are known as a regular home loan, or a traditional home financing loan, and then in addition to that, they do what's called a soft second, to bring that price of the home down to the affordability for the family's income. And that depends on whether or not they're a family that qualifies at a fifty percent low to moderate income, or at a hundred and twenty percent low to moderate income. So the housing specialist will help us look for tools for that, to kind of bridge that gap between what it might run at the market rate to what it, what they can afford on their income eligibility.
Okay. And then also, in the last sentence on that page, it does say that the target area will include the area from Fifty-Ninth to Fifty-third, Blue Ridge, cutoff to Woodson. So I'm understanding that there's no changes to that area that can occur because of the grant?
Correct.
Okay. And then also, who will oversee the other cities' disbursements of the money? Is that our Finance, or...
Right. As the lead agency, all of the financial record and accountability is done through the City of Raytown. We then, one of the things that will be coming forward is an interlocal agreement between the City of Raytown and the City of Sugar Creek, and the City of Raytown and the City of Grandview, to lay out exactly who, what the responsibilities are, and how that whole process will work.
Okay.
So staff right now, sorry, didn't mean to interrupt, staff right now is going to be, start meeting with those individual cities to kind of work out the logistics of how that, how that will occur.
Okay, and so if, and I don't think this would probably occur, but if one of the cities would misappropriate funds, would that have any effect on Raytown?
One of the reasons why we've gone to hiring, or is asking the Board to consider hiring at your next meeting, the housing specialist and the grant administrator, is because those two people are experts at CDBG programs, and in particular, the neighborhood stabilization program. I don't think there's any way that those two individuals would get, let us get down the path of inappropriately spending that money. Because what happens is, the paperwork gets from each individual city, gets submitted to those two individuals, then those two individuals review it, then Raytown reviews it, both Jeremy and myself, and then we would, so there's lots of stop-gap measures to make sure that that doesn't occur.
And so also, with the house that is rehabbed or sold, does Raytown have any more, or basically, when that house is sold, does Raytown have any more responsibility to that house?
Yes, there is a monitoring period with the affordability. When an entity does a soft second in order to make the house have that affordability characteristic, that affordability money has to be monitored for a certain period of time. That's one of the things that we're trying to hammer out in the interlocal agreements, to figure out if we're going to mirror what the state requirements are, or if we want more stringent affordability. The problem with that is the cost of monitoring and making sure that that occurs. And the housing specialist at your next meeting will talk a little bit about that process, how it works. Essentially, what happens is, each year on the anniversary date of this, of the ownership change, we send a letter to make sure that the property owner still resides at that, at that location.
Okay. And then also, in the grant agreement, in number one, it says the state will make funding assistance for the federal fiscal year two thousand and eight. The reason for the two thousand and eight funding?
It's not unusual for funding from the federal government to be actually, they use the original date that it came through the federal government, and then they kind of re-appropriate it every year, so that's what is actually happening. And that's one of the reasons why the, when they give you an obligation date, like ours is, they want fifty percent of the obligation to happen by March eleventh, two thousand and thirteen. What we're going to strive for is much sooner than that. You know, it's very important for us to get out there and get moving, and get the dollars spent, and get it infused into the neighborhoods.
Okay. One more question. On the funding approval page, it has the number of beneficiaries as twenty-seven units. Is that twenty-seven houses?
It is twenty-seven houses, the, which is kind of an estimate, because when you're putting together the grant, you know, we submitted, I think, for a little over two million. Then the state took all of the applications that they got, and kind of divvied the money up as they felt appropriate. So those numbers will probably change a little bit, depending on what houses actually sell from, sell at. You know, if we purchase it at a pretty low rate, and then are actually able to turn it around and sell it more at a market level, then those proceeds can be infused back into the program to use for another house. So some of those are an estimate, and that's why it's important to have that grant administrator who knows how to amend the process through the State of Missouri, to be able to continue to use those proceeds for other houses.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Mr. Azier?
Yeah, my question is, will any of these houses that are rehabbed, will those, will the...
Yeah, my question is, will any of these houses that are rehabbed, will those, will they go open for bids to the public, or how will that be handled?
The actual sale of the house?
Not the sale, but should they rehab a house, how will they select the company that will do the work?
Because it comes, the money comes from the federal government and then goes through the state, there are very strict guidelines on the bidding process for contractors. And I talked to the housing specialist, and he's actually going to cover that at the first meeting in May. So, everybody's very clear about how that process will work, because there are pretty strict rules. And that's part of the reason why we are asking the board to consider that position, because it's not something that city staff has the expertise in.
Thank you.
Ms. White?
Ms. Lynn, thank you, first of all, for all of your explanations and all the work you've done to acquire this grant. We've sort of opened up a whole new can of worms for you and the rest of staff, but it's one that I'm glad to see we finally got open, and I appreciate it. And I would like to make a motion to approve this.
Ms. White's got the motion to approve, seconded by Mr. Hamilton?
No, I have a question.
Oh, let me finish with the second. Pardue had the second, excuse me. Hold on, hold on one second. So, you do have the second, all right? Mr. Pardue?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hamilton, please, sorry.
Just a question about these two individuals, the housing specialists and so forth. They're going to be paid out of the grant. And when the grant runs out, does Raytown have any obligation as a leading city to continue their employment in any fashion?
No, it's basically a professional contract for services, very similar to an engineer that we might hire for a public works project. So, their agreement is for the length of the grant itself.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Van Bussker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have voted to approve the use of grant funds in the past, and I will no doubt do that in the future. But I'll always evaluate each application and acceptance of any grant to make determinations to whether I believe it's what's best for our community. Another consideration for me is which federal or state agency we're going to be in bed with when we accept such a grant. And, you know, there's always the argument that if we don't take it, if we don't take the grant dollars, someone else will. And that's true. And in some instances, that's a good reason to take the grant money. I've even stated that myself in the past and probably will in the future. But that's not a valid argument if the project is not going to be used to the good of our community. And let me give you an example of, let's say fictitiously, if a grant was available to add payday loan establishments to our city, you know, I would not be in favor of that. I don't think it'd be good for our community. I think we have a sufficient number of those in the city. So, that argument could be used, that, well, hey, the money's available, we need to take it. If we don't, someone else will. But I don't think it'd be a good way to use that. So, I'm going to oppose this legislation that's before us this evening, to participate in this particular grant established by the Dodd-Frank Wall Street Reform and Consumer Protection Act. And I'm not sure how you get rehabbing houses in conjunction with HUD from that, but that's what's being done. Want to let you know this, though. If this ordinance passes and is approved, it's my sincere hope that it will be a success for our community. Thank you.
Mr. Kramer?
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank staff for their diligence. As Ms. White said, the opportunities that you've given us through grant monies, not just through this, but through many other things. And I think the running total's now going to be up over $6 million in the last three years that have come to our community through researching and writing these grants. And I just want to commend you on what you've done and the opportunity to take some of these houses. Because as I campaigned and went door to door, there were some vacant houses that were in pretty bad shape, and the opportunity to take those houses and beautify them and make them sellable and make them a good home for somebody in our community, I think, is a great opportunity. So, once again, thank you. Thank you for all you do and giving us this opportunity to have this come before us.
Any further discussion? Got a motion and a second? Ask the clerk to call the vote, please.
Alderman White?
Yes.
Alderman Pardue?
Yes.
Alderman Hamilton? Alderman Nelson?
Yes.
Alderman Van Bussker?
No.
Alderman Lightfoot?
Yes.
Alderman Kramer?
Yes.
Alderman Azier?
Yes.
Alderman Mock?
Yes.
Alderman Ertz?
Yes.
Second reading on number three, please.
An ordinance authorizing and approving a municipal agreement with the Missouri Highway and Transportation Commission for the Bridge Rehabilitation Approach Pavement Work and Sidewalks on Blue Ridge Boulevard over 350 Highway.
Andy Noel, our Public Works Director, anything to add, sir?
Nothing to add from the last meeting. Here to answer any questions you may have.
Questions, Mr. Noel, Mr. Kramer.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Kramer has the motion to approve, seconded by most of the people on the right side. Ms. Nelson, I believe. Discussion before we vote on item number three. Mr. Hamilton?
I just had a quick question. This business about removing snow from the bridge, is that from now on, forever, or...
Yes, it is. It's an item that we have been doing as we clear Blue Ridge Boulevard through that area. We didn't seem it was fit to just raise the plow for 200 feet and then put it back down.
So, this just makes it official that we'll continue. Okay, thank you.
Other discussion? Not appearing. Ask the clerk to call the vote, please.
Yes.
Alderman Nelson?
Yes.
Alderman Azier?
Yes.
Alderman Mock?
Yes.
Alderman Hamilton? Alderman Ertz?
Yes.
Alderman White?
Yes.
Alderman Lightfoot?
Yes.
Alderman Pardue?
Yes.